Would like to record, go ahead. While we are conducting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment to please mute your microphone. All right, we have one, two, three, four, five items on the agenda tonight. We will start with primary election and election security, which I will turn first to Kevin Hartunian. And then I know there's some other folks here to talk on that.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to discuss the election security. I'm going to hand it right over to Chief Hubby. And I believe Beth Willis, our town clerk, is available for any questions as well. She's in their office. We'll get her online if she needs to.
Thank you, Mr. Time Minister. Good evening, Select Board members, Mr. Chairman. So on June 22, the governor signed in the new election reform bill titled The Voters Act of 2022. And what this act does is allows it authorizes the Select Board to assign police officers to the election polls. And historically, the how it has all worked is the town clerk works with the chief of police in determining the correct number of police officers and how and constables and how the security of the election polls would work. So we have outlined a whole letter to the to the Select Board outlining our processes that have taken place. First and foremost, the town clerk contacts the appointed constable to assign that person to the polls for the during the election hours. Then the town clerk works in conjunction with the police chief. We determine the number of police officers that are required, whether it's inside or outside of the facility, the elections, the polling site, based upon the the number of participants that the chief thinks that will be voting during that time. Then we assign a police officer that meets the town clerk at Town Hall. We escort all of the materials from the Town Hall to the election polls. They have a police officer assigned during that time that is based upon availability. And then at the end of the evening, we escort the town clerk, her staff, and all of the ballots back to the Town Hall. So what we're asking this evening is that if with your permission, if you would designate, the Select Board would designate that authority back to the chief of police, so I can work in conjunction with the town clerk and we can collaboratively work together. So the action item would be based upon the Chapter 92, Section 72 of the Mass General Laws on the Act of 2022, which now changes the Select Board rather than the chief of police with the assignment official of sufficient number of police officers or constables for each polling locations. And we would recommend a motion that would designate that the Select Board would designate the chief of police to carry on the traditional determining the availability within conjunction. It's more importantly with the conjunction of the town clerk and us working collaboratively together to accomplish the security of the of the election sites.
If I could ask a, I guess, direct question. Basically, in the past, this would be something that the chief and the clerk would do together. A new state law has basically given that authority to us, the Select Board. What we're looking for is a motion to basically give it back to you and the clerk, at least this time around.
That is exactly it. Wonderful summary, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With that, I'll say, does anyone have any question? Makes sense. It seems like nobody does have any questions. In that case, does anyone have a motion?
I'll read that motion if you'd care me to.
Please.
Move to approve a sufficient number of police officers at the polling location at every election therein to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections as required by Section 72 Mass General Law, Chapter 54, which was changed in Section 13 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022. Further, move to designate the chief of police to authorize the authority, I'm sorry, the chief of police, the authority to assign sufficient police officers according to scheduling, availability, and the needs of a specific election. The town clerk will advise the chief of police on the location and time the officer is needed.
Thank you very much. That may be one of our longer motions. I'll ask if there's a second. I think I heard one from Mr. McDonald. Is there, I see that Beth has joined us. It's moving along quite quickly at this point, but I would ask if there's any discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I'm ready to move to roll call vote. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
And Mr. Hook is an aye. It passes unanimously four to nothing.
Thank you.
We took care of it. We're all set. We're in a good shape. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Kevin. And we're moving at a pretty good pace right now, so I'm ready to move right onto the next item, which this time, I'm sure it goes right to my good friend Kevin Hartunian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Select Board. I have on the agenda for our work session tonight to discuss the concept and the potential of a special town meeting, potentially this year, but also potentially in the future. And I've had some conversations with Martha Morrison, well, lots of conversations with Martha Morrison, who's the chair of the Planning Board, as we all know, and very active in a number of fronts with planning and town activities. And we've been speaking about a lot of the efforts that collectively the Select Board, Martha and the Planning Board and myself are either undertaking or have undertook. And everything from the business showcase to the master plan, MBTA multifamily housing, economic development opportunities for projects here in town. And there's a lot of items that we've talked about that we're working on that could potentially or will require quick action by the town to review and either approve or deny potential changes or accepting certain things that either the state's looking for us to take up or which we feel we should take up locally. The current makeup of an annual town meeting is the standard systems of the town, the standard operating procedure for the town. Once a year in May, we have that that meeting where we can do all of our business. One thing that I've learned and I've observed is that to have the flexibility when there's economic development related activity that could be a benefit for the town is considering doing an STM five, six, seven months out, if and when appropriate, that would then allow us to have to move quicker to support projects, projects we, the town feels are positive new growth opportunities and to not miss out on an opportunity because people or organizations or or groups would have to wait for a year or six months to see if they can move forward. If we're going to do what we said we're going to do, which is to at least move forward and consider opportunities to for economic development, new growth, smart growth. We want to be able to be as nimble as possible as we are competing against other communities to bring those businesses to top seal, the restaurants, the retail, to add opportunities on potentially Route One or other locations for that matter. And more recently, there's been conversations that stemmed from the June 7 Business and Development Showcase, where there is a couple of opportunities that are out there that we've had discussions that are something time sensitive and which, if if we wanted to pursue, really are right sized and right fitted to be considered in an STM. So today, I just wanted to float, at this point in time, float the concept of an STM in general terms, but also specifically if opportunities presented themselves this year that we might look to back into an STM that would happen either in mid-November or the very beginning of December. And again, items that would go on would be specifically for economic development purposes, allowing us to be responsive to opportunities that the town might want to consider.
I mean, I will tell you in no uncertain terms that a special town meeting is not something I would enter into lightly. It's not something that I would suggest that we're going to throw up anytime somebody comes through. But to your point, if the project is what I'll call the right thing for the town, if it checks the boxes of something that we have heard from the town is something that they're looking for, you know, through the ECDC and some of the work that they've done, we've gotten a clear picture of what the residents of this town are looking for. And if it makes financial sense in that there is a cost to having a special town meeting, but if the tax benefit, for instance, of a project being able to get going six months or open a year ahead of time because of a special town meeting, that would more than cover those costs, then that, to me, would make sense as well. So in general, you know, I would certainly never say no to a special town meeting, but when presented with the right opportunity, I would absolutely emphatically say yes to a special town meeting.
I can't add much to that in the sense that I think a special town meeting is a really serious step, in my opinion. Marshall pointed out that it costs money to do that. We can, we can do it on, and I would agree to do it on special circumstances for special needs. And there are certain kinds of economic development programs that might be worthwhile doing that. However, there may be others as well. I'm not totally averse to special town meetings, but I'm just saying that that's, that is an expense, puts an extra work burden on the town clerk and trying to organize that thing. And we can move forward. We can continue to discuss it, in my opinion. However, for certain kinds of applications, I would certainly be in agreement. Other applications, I may not. I don't want this to become a carte blanche kind of thing, like Marshall said. You got to be a little bit careful about about what what requirements there are to call a special town meeting. But I think we, as a group, can decide how to do that on individual basis.
Boyd, I agree. I think that in the last five years, the drumbeat from everyone I've spoken with in town has been development, development. You know, how do we, how do we attract business? How do we, you know, become a desirable location for more than just living? And, you know, this, this, to me, is the strongest opportunity I've heard to do something really interesting in the town. And I think the constituents and the members of this town would be totally behind what goes into doing it. And Beth, I understand that it's more work. I don't want you to think for a second, I've got blinders on to that. But this is, this might be a but, you know. To me, this feels like an extraordinary opportunity that we just have to vet. And we have to vet it, and the town wants us to vet it, in my opinion.
In my view, I almost think we need to separate this from this specific opportunity or any specific opportunity. For me, the only way we can do this is if we come up with rules that say, this is when we're going to consider an STM. These are the bars. These are the hurdles that need to get over. And in that way, we're not seen as picking what does and does not advance when that's not our job. It's our job kind of to, to say what meets that rules. But in order to do that, we need to set those, set those rules and make it clear. My other question, though, is if we have an STM, and this is more of a process question, so I'm glad Beth and Kevin, you're on, you can probably help me. If we have an STM, what's the process for getting warrants on an STM? Is it completely up to the Select Board? Can citizens put in requests, like in a, in a regular one? I mean, do we risk that this snowballs into basically having a second town meeting?
So I'll let Ms. Willis maybe speak to specifically what the process would be for public if for outside the warrant articles that the Select Board might desire to put on the STM. But I would say that the intent is to be nimble and precise with an STM and that we should make all efforts that this, again, is framed through an economic development lens or something that's very, that's required of us, that we need to move on, move quickly. And that, I could not agree with you more, Mr. McDonald, that it's really important that we have a framework around what would trigger that STM. And then once we have it, that it's very precise. And so, again, I think one of the things that I would suggest if we are going to, and again, speaking with Martha Morrison, and I think that there's, there's some a five, six, seven month out from ATM, right? There's sort of a midpoint. And so we're not doing it the month after or the second month after. Or if we get past that seventh month, that, okay, we've got one in three months. We'll add you, or four months from now, we'll add you onto the, onto the ATM if it makes sense to do so. But I think that if we have economic development opportunities that are, again, in line with surveys we've sent out, the downtown revitalization plan, the efforts that over the next 18 months around the master plan that seem to be formulating, and we want to take advantage of those opportunities, those are, and the Select Board feels that these projects meet the desire of the community. I think that's really the ultimate threshold. We can work through some of the specifics on it. As for the community component of what, what they're able to put onto an STM, I know it's, it's, it's open. So I, but I would let Ms. Willis maybe speak to the specifics on that.
Good evening. Yes, Kevin's correct. The Select Board would have to, at a meeting, they would have to open, open the warrant, and then they would, again, have to close it. The period of time would be up to the Select Board. And then based on that, and when the, when the board decides to call the actual meeting, schedule the meeting, based on that, there are rules for a special town meeting that warrants have to be mailed 14 days before the meeting. The warrant has to be posted 14 days before. And then there's a voter registration deadline 10 days before. So then those are, those are the sort of deadline things. But and then there is the opportunity, if because the, the board is opening the warrant, that citizens could bring other things to them to be put on the meeting.
And I would also just, just go back to one other component of, outside the citizens component, is also, and I didn't mention a second ago, any project that does meet or needs to have some consideration at town meeting to be voted on would need to meet certain thresholds in order to be put on. It's not just the concept. It would have to have curb cuts, if curb cuts are necessary. You know, the, any type of understanding of what zoning, if any zoning relief is required. Presumably, this would, the STM might resolve that in and of itself potentially. But there would need to be certain types of thresholds that any, any group or developer or property owner would need to bring to us in order to say, yeah, this, this project can go forward if they have a vote of the community to move a change as well. So wouldn't it be just sort of, hey, I've got this great idea. Let's have an STM. It would have to have control of the property. You would have to have certain elements that are outside of local jurisdiction, like curb cuts on certain areas, things like that, that they already have written approvals for to justify it.
I will tell you that one of the things that we heard during our business showcase was a people had a conception that you just couldn't do things in Topsfield because it would take too long. It would take too long to go through, for instance, a zoning change, or it would take too long to get to a town meeting for whatever the vote was. And when this concept was first brought up a few weeks ago, there was somebody who was, you know, their, their initial thought was, well, we don't want to do that because we would set a precedent. And my view is we may very well want to do it because we can set a precedent that basically says to a legitimate, you know, fully vetted development project, whatever it may be, that, no, you can do it here. If you come to us with all of your ducks in a row, and that's what Kevin is referencing, that, you know, basically, we can say in concept, we have the ability to do a special town meeting. We have the support to do a special town meeting. Now it's back on you to do all of the work you have to do to come to us and know that if we're actually going to go through the time, effort, and expense of doing this, that we don't get to the other end and it all just falls apart because you haven't done your job. So whereas a developer in the past may have looked beyond Topsfield because they said, well, they're not going to work with us and it's going to take too long and we can't get anything done there, we can flip that story on its head and say, we're ready. We're ready to do what needs to be done. You need to come to us, ready to do. And if those two things come together, where we're a town that can be nimble and act, you know, proactively towards something, then we could be a very attractive place for developments. And I need to be very clear on this because I know that some people get, you know, they hear the word development, and there are still a lot of people in this town, and it's fine, that get very kind of nervous about that because we are always talking about preserving what is Topsfield, what people love about Topsfield. None of this is putting a Walmart on Route One. It is always going to be a development that fits what the town is looking to do based on, you know, not, not even a lot, our concept, but what we've heard from residents through the many avenues that we've, you know, gone out and looked for their opinion. So this is, we have a set of, of information on what the residents want in this town. And if the development comes along that checks those boxes, it may not be the hard and fast rules that Mr. McDonald is talking about, but we do have more or less a list of what people are looking for. And if a development comes along and can check a lot of those, then that's going to be kind of the bar that it passes as long as that developer has done their work and is ready. You know, it's not us ready to go to special town meeting. It's they who need to be ready at that point.
I, I would agree with almost all of that. This, this is a subject about whether or not we would consider doing a special town meeting for specific situations. And, and I will put the monkey on Kevin's back because he's the guy that's got to sell it to the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen will decide whether or not we're going to do a special town meeting. And I agree with Marshall. We've got a pretty good idea, I think, about what a lot of citizens would like us to be working toward and trying to maintain Topsfield's character, but also moving forward within, with an upgrade of Topsfield's character. And so I will shut up and I will, like I said, I'll put it on Kevin's back. It's his job to sell us on the idea that he needs a special town meeting.
Yeah. I mean, it sounds, Kevin, like you've got the support you need conditionally. I don't want to speak for everybody, but that's, that's how I would summarize whatever.
Excellent. Well, like I mentioned earlier, there is, there is some ideas that are, that are some potential that's, that's, that's brewing. And if it takes another step or two forward in the next three weeks or so, and we know that it's heading in the right direction in our next work session, I'm sure we can have a little more robust of a conversation. But the general concept of the economic development STM, it's great to get the feedback to know that we can continue at least moving down the path and providing the community a voice to be able to weigh in on something if it, if it does hit and it is something we think is worthwhile. So I'm up for trying to sell if it, if the sale, if it's appropriate to do so, for sure.
I got, Beth, can I ask you, how, how quickly can you move on something like this? I mean, what's practically given, you know, process in our town? I think someone said November. It could be as early as November for?
Yeah, we've, we've had a couple of special town meetings. It's, it's kind of a different scenario. If it's a citizen's petition that's brought to us, that, that's a whole different process where we have, you know, the board then has like 40, within 45 days, they have to hold a meeting. So you can kind of like put the meeting off until then. But with this, it's really kind of at the discretion of the board. And I do appreciate, especially this year, this fall, I do appreciate having some input into it as to when it could happen. If it can't happen by mid-October, then to me, I would rather it not happen until mid-November. And, you know, there's just things like that because I'm dealing with a state primary and a state election. And for the state election, we now have two weeks of early, in-person, early voting. So that means my last two weeks of October. So these are the issues that I'm dealing with. I'm also concerned with some logistics issues about short-term notice getting into Masco for a town meeting. I reached out to the Bauxford Town Clerk to ask, in her experience, has she had any luck getting into Masco for a fall town meeting like this? And she was kind of like mixed results, and she's had to hold meetings elsewhere. So it's, it's going to be, you know, a logistics kind of an issue where we're probably basically looking at going back to Procter for something like this. And to me, I don't like it so much because I feel like we're confusing the voter. We're, we're have, every time we turn around, we're hosting town meeting lately in a different place. And that's just because of what's been going on in the world the last few years. So that's one thing I don't like about it, but it doesn't mean, it's not a reason not to do it. So.
And I would also just, one last, to emphasize the point that we're very conscious of the election and make sure we get that right. And that's why we talked about post-November election, but prior to Thanksgiving, if we could squeeze it in, if we can manage, if it's necessary and logistically, you know, timelines work out that we can have it, then we would do it prior to Thanksgiving. However, we're very much that we want to get it right. And if we post it two weeks out and it happens the first week or second week in December, I wouldn't go any later than that, then that would be what we would target if necessary. But those are sort of the windows that we've looked at for this year, if it becomes something that we want to do this year.
It's my impression right now that Beth is running about as fast as she can. And, and to put any more load on her to do a special town meeting in the middle of the, what she's trying to get done in the election process is, is important. And I think she needs to have a major input to that, Kevin, and I know you're aware of that.
Our quorum rules the same? Are our quorum rules the same? So we would still have to have, what is, 120 citizens?
Okay. It's 100.
100, okay.
100, yep.
And I think one thing that, you know, was, prior to the meeting, just thinking through it a little bit too, is, you know, the last couple of town meetings, we've had a very smooth town meeting, I'd say. Thanks to a lot of work by the board and Ms. Willis and others, income. But our numbers have been 150 plus or minus, fair to say. And I think, as I think through this, and I don't have the experience to say this definitively, but I, I can imagine with an economic development focused STM, where we're talking about particularly making changes that could influence and increase new growth, but more importantly, add amenities to this community that we've talked about and we want. I think that's, hopefully, will spur people to come. Maybe in both directions, if it's something that we missed the mark on that we bring forward, but at least the opportunity to explore, is this, is this right? And let's go if it is. And it'll be a shorter meeting, which I think could help as well, that people know you're coming for an hour. You know, this is what we're going to discuss. And let's, let's have a robust conversation. We can be really focused on, on the topic.
If the subject is right, you won't have any trouble meeting your quorum. Think about when we had a question about lease law in town. There were hundreds of people that came to that meeting. And if I'm reading all this correctly, the right kind of And, um, if I'm reading all this correctly, um, the right kind of subject on an economic development idea, I'll bet you we won't have trouble meeting a quorum.
I agree.
All right. With that, uh, I think we're ready to move forward. Uh, item number six on the agenda, a fiscal 2023 MS4 consulting contract. I think I know who I need to turn to for this.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Um, this is the, which we remember at the ATM this past year, we allocated $50,000 towards, um, some work on, on some items that we needed to do regarding the MS4 requirements. Um, historically, things over the last four or five years that we need to, um, ensure that we, we produce and we, we, we update. In addition to that, we're looking at, um, the next fiscal year as well of, um, meeting the requirements from the state and federal government around the stormwater requirements, which is what MS4 are. Um, that said, I'd like to acknowledge and thank, um, Heidi Gaffney, our conservation agent, who has really picked up the ball on something that, um, there's, it just doesn't really fall into a home, MS4. It would be, I would put it in a planner's position, but obviously we're working with, with different resources in Topsfield at this moment in times. And Heidi saw that there was a need and volunteered more or less, uh, to, to take on the logistics of making it happen. It's not incredibly glamorous MS4 work, it's stormwater, but it's a really big important need that we need to do. And, um, Heidi's done some great work reaching out to consultants to, to help us pull together what we need to do and ensure that we're adhering to the, to the requirements of both state and federal guidelines. So tonight we have in front of you, um, is the proposed contract for moving that forward. And the reason we're doing this in a, um, select board work session is because it is very time sensitive. We do need to move on it and provide the consultant enough time to finish the work in order to meet the, the guidelines and wanted to do. So I don't know, uh, Ms. Gaffney, if you have anything else to add or details you want to provide, please feel free.
I mean, that sums it up. Thank, thank you very much. Um, so the, the time sensitive nature is really where we're at. These are requirements we, the town has to meet. We've got this consultant that is more than capable of doing the work. He's excellent to work with, well, the company is, they do this for many other towns. Um, there's a, an annual report that's actually due on September 28th, which is why it's really time sensitive to, to give him the green light to, to get going on what he can and get the report in and have timelines set up for when he's, you know, when the rest of it's going to get completed during fiscal year. So it's be, before you for, um, hopeful approval to get the green light as soon as possible. And these, these are mandates from, they're federal mandates that basically there's, there's no choice but to do this work.
I, um, I understand that, uh, I, and I agree, Heidi, I agree, you and Kevin both. I think it's important that we move forward from a political standpoint because we have to. But I'm not sure from a geographical standpoint, we need to bother because I don't think it's ever going to rain again.
I know, you know, I was actually counting on the heavy rain this afternoon for many, many reasons, but there's a few sites I need to check and including some work I won't discuss. But, um, there, and it didn't come and it's still not going to come. And I was hopeful it was going to be here in the morning and it's still not going to come.
Heidi, I know that we've talked about this and allocated for it and, you know, this is a formality at this point. I've got one question on the paperwork, um, that I, I caught, and maybe I'm being dense, but on the standard contract form, I think it's called, the entire word is for engineering and consulting services. Uh, um, do you see that document?
So the standard contract form, I've got the contract review form.
Um, I don't know, it's a three-page, it's a three-page doc. I printed it out, so I'm afraid I don't know, it was one of your attachments, maybe your last attachment.
Okay. So I, I've got contract review form, which is a standalone. And then I have written description of goods or services, which is two pages. And then I've got the contract from Comprehensive Environmental, which includes their standard contract form.
That may be the one. It says page, page one of three on the top.
Yep, I see it.
You see the third bullet there, payment?
I see it.
Okay. I really don't know what those, that first sentence means. It, it's both a progress payment and a lump sum basis called out. And I just, I thought it was fighting with itself, but maybe that means something to you. And, and it's, it's not something to spend a lot of time on other than, I think it's contradictory.
Uh, yeah, I s- I see what you're.
So I just didn't know if you had allocated for the payment a certain way and this, this, you know, looks like it asked for it both ways. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
No, I appreciate that. Um, honestly, it's something I hadn't seen, not familiar with. I know it's, it's, it's going to be an invoiced, and I see that they have the invoice piece in there, but also lump sum. I, and I see you're contradictory.
Yeah.
Um, I, I will certainly, I will certainly ask for clarification on that.
Thanks. That's it.
All right. Uh, can I entertain a motion?
Can I ask you again? So I think this was discussed and I've joined the board. Kevin, you said this was approved at the ATM already, so the funds are already allocated for this as well?
Funds have been allocated ST, uh, ATM through free cash allocation, um, to address this, these needs.
Thank you.
It was Article 27. I, I had pulled it up. I was just rereading it. So if that helps.
MS4 was initially, was an issue at the ATM.
Yep.
Marshall, I'll. Just to be clear, the funds, so what we're really doing here is just approving the specific contract, which has already been funded at town meeting.
Yep.
Correct.
I'll make a motion, uh, vote, uh, motion to approve a contract between the town of Topsfield and Comprehensive Environmental, Inc., C E I of Merrimack, New Hampshire, for engineering services related to stormwater permitting in the amount of $50,000.
Seconded.
Right. Uh, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to, uh, roll call vote. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Hook is an aye. The contract is approved.
Heidi, thank, thank you, Heidi. Keep an eye on these guys.
I sure will.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move to, uh, the next item on the agenda, the old highway garage RFP draft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll provide a quick overview. So, um, as we all know, two years ago, two ATMs ago, we received approval, um, to rezone and then additionally to disposition, the former highway garage located at 10 School, uh, which is across from the shopping center in the downtown, set back, uh, behind two, uh, properties ahead of it. Um, the idea of that was to include in the business, um, village district and also to allow the town to find a more productive use than what it's currently, uh, providing the town, which is basic storage and the very little investment in the property. Um, we've been talking about beautification of the downtown. We've talked about adding, uh, amenities and businesses that, that fit what Topsfield would like to see. This property is, in my mind, probably the most important property that we have, uh, in front of us to do something productive and I believe is, could be, uh, and create a snowball effect with adding more, um, businesses in the downtown and in Topsfield in general. As if done well and done right, a redevelopment at this property with something that's a productive, um, uh, business such as a restaurant, tap room, or mixed use of retail, could become a regional draw and bring people into our downtown, bring people into Topsfield that might not otherwise do so. And provide more importantly to our own residents, um, a place to gather, a place to, 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 something of benefit to the community. And so through that process two years ago, and since that process, we've been working through, um, very strategically drafting, um, an RFP, uh, request for proposal. Um, with disposition of property, we would, we need to have a formal RFP that would be, that would explain what the opportunity is, provide parameters of what the process would be and what the town ultimately would like to see in there. The amazing opportunity that we have is that we have a property in the middle of the downtown that we can control its destiny. Uh, we're not reliant on a private property owner to make an investment in the space. Um, that we can provide the opportunity for somebody to come in and do that for us and to add that amenity, like I said. So, um, about two months ago, we, we engaged with, um, Glenn Gibbs. Glenn Gibbs is the former, uh, planner in Ipswich. For, um, quite some time, he was one of the leaders in the economic development resurgence in Ipswich with the restaurants and retail that, that you now see. He's retired, um, a handful of years ago. I cold called him. I introduced myself, told him what we've been up to, told him about this opportunity. And he was very excited to help us as a consultant in drafting a very thoughtful RFP draft. Um, what we have on board docs and for today's purposes is the most recent draft of the document, um, which is a very common sort of pro, document with an RFP for disposition. Um, and he's covered a lot of really good elements to it. And what I like the most is that being from Ipswich and having many, have achieved many of the goals we want to achieve here in Topsfield, he provides in this RFP a perspective that, that aligns with what we're trying to do, the things we talked about earlier with economic development. So, um, what I'm hoping tonight is not for vote or, or anything more than sort of a status check with the board. Um, make sure that we're heading in the right direction with this document and to answer any questions within the document thus far to provide clarity. Next steps I'll also mention is after tonight, I'll go back to Mr. Gibbs, provide any additional, uh, feedback or things that we might want to modify in the document. Um, he'll continue to piece together some of the specifics. You'll notice on the cover page, it says title page, obviously that comes out of it. Uh, insert photo here. Those are things we'll add at the, at the final step of the process. But those are the things that we'll be moving forward with. The next step after that would then to be setting up a community conversation. A year and a half ago before, or two years ago, before we went to, um, town meeting, we did a Zoom call and over a hundred, uh, residents and stakeholders in this community present, where we talked about the highway garage and the fact that we were looking to rezone it, the fact that we wanted to put a more productive use in that space. And that in a month or two after that meeting, there would be town meeting for people to vote in and allow us to, the flexibility to pursue that, which the town overwhelmingly supported. And so our goal after we have the RFP is to come back to the community before we release this to the public, to the, um, out as a formal RFP and waiting for the respondents to respond, get final feedback from the community. Is there anything we're not considering? Is there tweaks to what people would like to see? But more importantly, just provide an update and an opportunity to, to, to make sure we're hitting the right marks with what we're trying to accomplish with this. This document is based on feedback we received two years ago at that meeting and subsequent conversations with ECDC, businesses downtown, other people, residents of the community and other stakeholders who've indicated, you know, that surveys as well. I should say we had a survey this past May with 264 respondents where overwhelmingly, and you'll see the data is actually in this RFP, people responded, um, that they'd like to see a full-service restaurant in the downtown. And so the goal is that this meets one of those survey, uh, the survey results as well. Not just the conversations and, and, um, that we've had, but more concrete data to back it up as well. So with that said, I will stop talking and I, we can, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, you know, I'm available. We can walk through some of it. We could kind of just open up for questions, however you want to go through.
Yeah, I would take my guidance from, uh, the three other gentlemen here. If there's a specific area they have question or if they just want to walk through what, uh, what if folks, uh, interested in it.
Marshall, I mean, I, it, it's a, it's a, I learned so much reading this, Kevin. You know, uh, it was, it's, it's got great, great legs, great bones. But it also raises a number of really big questions. And, and is that really the intent of what we want to do tonight? I mean, I've, I've got a list of questions, but how, how much time do you want to spend on this? And how deep do you want to get into it?
This is one of the most important things I think we'll do. Master plans up there, disposition, disposition, um, recruit businesses, maybe to go through an STM or, or an ATM to help see the other. So I would certainly spend whatever time the board needs tonight to make sure that we're continuing, moving in the right direction.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I'll, I'll start it up since I'm already talking. Um, and I'll try and prioritize this. I saw a call out to a wetlands issue. I see, did Heidi get off? She was there. Um, but I saw a call out to a, a wetlands issue in here. And knowing, you know, having been through that personally and, and having lived here long enough, I know that can be a pretty stringent thing to get beyond. Do you have any concerns about that topic?
So I'm texting Heidi so she can provide a direct answer to that question. I, with, with Heidi, and she might be able to jump on in a second. I've spoken with Heidi though, early in this process a couple of years ago, about what with the, the brook that runs in front of the property, what are the impacts? The general, the general sense I received or, or the direction she, she pointed me in and said, if the building's footprint doesn't move closer to the impacted area to the, towards the brook.
Yeah.
Typically that should be clear. There isn't necessarily going to be an issue. Um, if you raise the building in its entirety, that could come up as be more conversation, potentially more issue. If you preserve it, you're, should be okay. Now, if you add to it behind the building, if someone wanted to go higher or push back for some condos or townhouses or in addition to that, you could also add, uh, you could potentially add that if the setbacks are appropriate from the zoning perspective.
Okay.
Uh, but yes, the brook is actually, um, the wetlands protection element that we need to consider in this whole thing.
Right.
And Heidi, you missed the first half of that, but thank you for jumping back on.
Sorry about that. I got a phone call about my dad, so I had to jump off.
Oh.
All good, all good. No worries. It's resolved. All good.
All right. Awesome. Um, what I said is, when we talked a couple of years ago, very beginning of just kicking the tires on disposition, we looked at the footprint of the property, the fact that we have the brook there. And the general sense was if you leave the building, the structural components of the building and don't, do not add anything closer towards the brook, generally that is what's perceived as being acceptable, general terms. It has to go through the process, but that generality of what we talked about. And then if you raise the building, you might then be subject to further considerations with restrictions, um, with what's, Wetland, um, Protection Act setbacks.
It's also going to limit you because one of the options in there is adding on. So it, it would probably limit where there were, you know, there were, there were new additions to the building as well. Yeah?
Yeah, it's the, um, so the, the riverfront regulations, that one would qualify under redevelopment. Um, the, the basics of that piece is new work should be further from the stream and not closer. But where the entire thing down to the stream just about is paved, it's not that you could so much add, add like addition towards the river, but you've got all that paving already. So parking lots and other impervious, it's already impervious. So keeping it impervious is easier. The general gist is, you know, work away from the river and improve this. You're supposed to leave it, you're supposed to improve it over what it is now is kind of the gist of it. And manage, manage new stormwater. Stormwater out there is, you know, old school, not managed. So because the site is what it is, it lends itself to a lot of, um, I guess mitigation to, to, to really qualify with that, improve the situation. If that parking lot wasn't all the way down in the front, that would, you know, if that was wooded, that would greatly limit the site, but it's not.
I understand. Thank you.
Um, just a historical's perspective, um, for you young guys. Um, we, uh, functioned, our highway department functioned out of that building for, I don't know how many years. And we didn't have the ability to store our equipment indoors. So they were stored outdoors on the edge of that parking lot, uh, with their bumpers probably hanging over that brook. Okay? Uh, we don't know how much oil they dripped. We don't know how much gasoline was spilled. We don't know what happened when they changed oils in those vehicles. Probably nothing bad, but maybe nothing good either. Okay? So anytime we talk about trying to do something in that building, everybody is going to say, and Heidi. So anytime we talk about trying to do something in that building, everybody is going to say, and Heidi, this is on your back. Uh, everybody's going to say, what are you gonna do about all the potential chemi- contamination of that whole fr- front area of that parking lot next to the school brook? Um, so we, we gotta be able to answer that question. And I'm sure that borings and soil samples will answer all those questions.
So one of the things we, we have not done and we, we would, subject to um, terms within a RFP response is we haven't done a 21E. We do have though, um, Clean Soils Environmental Limited did a 2001, January 3, 2001. Uh, assessment of a limited subservice investigation report. Um, specifically the injection well area. We also know the underground oil tanks have been removed, um, which is a big, big important step. The report from Clean Soils of the thirty some, or the, I'm sorry, I didn't do thirty something four years. I think it does twelve borings they did, one boring exceeded um, by a very marginal amount. The um, the exceedance level or exceed, had an exceedance level. The recommendation for the consultant, because all the other areas were below the threshold was that they monitor it and that either they could remove the soil or they can do further tests in the future, determine if that. Um, if they did, I think five more borings and they were all below the, the level that they would bless it.
What, what did it exceed on? Does it say?
I can pull it. Yeah, I'd have to get into the specifics of the document.
I can, I can do it. No worries.
It's not my expertise, but I can read basically executive summary and.
Don't worry, don't worry, don't worry. We can keep, keep going. I'll, I'll find it.
We can, and, and I can, I know, uh, Mr. McDonald. There's something of a specialty of yours as well. We can maybe, maybe I'd love to tap your insight as well. Maybe I could, we could go over a copy of this at a, at a future time as well. But um, the, that, that and the um, Haze Engineering provided a soil suitability assessment for onsite sewage disposal. Um, back in oh one as well, um, to, to provide and confirm that it does have, it can perk and it does perk. But it is some, somewhat limited on, on the perking. So one of the things that we've done and I've had a chance to is we've worked with um, the adjacent property owner of the vacant land. Um, who is a property owner in town in multiple layers, who has shown a real excitement for the project. And also that all the efforts we're doing from a, a downtown revitalization and economic development front. And he has indicated, and I spoke to him as early as today, that there's a willingness to use his land as a parking lot or to help with the, 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 the septic components. And the um, the soils on his property. Um, and Heidi and I and Wendy, the health director, about a year and a half ago, looked on the, the geo map. And I, I don't want to misspeak, but it almost wrote, there was almost a line right on our property and their property. Where our soil was fine, his soil was great for, for purposes of percolating. And so, um, we've actually written in here with his approval that the budding neighbor, this gentleman in particular, does understand that there's a values, um, that, that his prop, he is willing to consider collaborating with a potential respondent on dispositioning his property with this property. Separate transactions in the towns, but that there was a willingness to explore. So if somebody wanted to do something, um, there might be a little bit more flexibility from parking and, and, and septic component of that.
But that one, that other one is basically the, the outer 100 feet of the riverfront area because the, that parcel is wooded. But there's area in the outer 100 feet. I, I do remember talking about that.
So Kevin, speaking of the perking wastewater disposal, there's a line in this document that says, you know, obviously that has to be determined whether, you know, a, a certain septic system can work, et cetera. I mean, I would, I would think that happens pretty soon before we go too far down this path to make sure that is a possibility. Yes?
On the, on the town side or on the private land?
Well, no, the town side, on the town side. Um, yeah, just reading the RFP, it brings, it, it questions wastewater disposal and whether it will be, you know, effective enough. So I'm just, before people go too far down this path, don't they want to test that first?
And they probably will build that into a, into the, into any purchase and sales. If, is that they want, they need to do probably, and they probably want to do maybe a 21E. They, they will certainly want to do some, um, some, some sampling for the perks. But I, one thing that Heidi confirmed with me is that the perks that we did back in 2001 are still good. Um, but the developer, they don't expire. Um, so that, so that, but realistically from a development standpoint, I would bring my own guy in there to test it as well. And it might be confirming exactly what the test showed before, um, which it probably will. Um, but I would certainly want clarification and that would be on a respondent to, to, if they choose to do so to perform that work.
Yeah.
Um, uh, just a comment, kind of a historical comment, because that's the only reason you guys keep me around here. Is, is um, upstream, uh, at, of, of that site on School Brook is a fairly significant residential development. That was, when it was built, there were a lot of, there was concern about whether or not it could perk and whether or not the septic systems could handle it. And uh, and, and it got built. My son was working on the Boy Scout, on a Boy Scout Eagle project, cleaning up School Brook. And he said, Dad, that water stinks. And he said, he said, uh, and, and they didn't want to walk around in the river because that water stinks. So the question I got Heidi, is water samples and that kind of stuff. Uh, is that, have, have we gone through any of that to see what that's like?
So. Uh, I'm trying to think of the best way to answer it without sounding like it's not, not our bag. Um, contamination is not something that we deal with, other than if contamination is known before someone, if someone's seeking permission to disturb soil or anything else, and there's either known or suspected contamination, then we would require all of the evidence to prove that moving the soil or proper disposal, all of those things. But on the, on the wetless protection side, we actually don't get into um, assessing for contamination. That's all part of 21E. Uh, and then if there was something contaminated in the stream itself, that would be, that would be taken up separately by, you know, that, that gets into the kind of the DEP contamination round state at, at the state level more. It's really not under the Wetlands Protection Act. We, we have no mechanism to force someone to investigate.
I, I will also tell you that when my son was there, it was only 25 years ago. So um, it, it may have changed a little bit in 25 years.
Definitely an unknown, but yeah, there's no mechanism under, under ours to require the testing. Unless there's, uh, you know, been a known historic, unless the 21E basically turns something up, then there's no mechanism for us to require testing.
But there is, but there is what, what this calls a reportable condition.
It did exceed in one of the borings, the thirty, it's thirty parts per, again, not my expertise, but it reached thirty-two and all the remaining test borings were below the thirty. And so in the executive summary, which um, I haven't looked at for a couple of months, but it does indicate that because of the, the fact that all of the other borings were below the exceeding this, the required or the cap, the level, that you, the town could either remove the dirt, um, in that particular area or they could do additional testing to confirm that, that this is an anomaly. It's not a consistent, consistent um, issue throughout. So, um.
That's what needs to be confirmed. It says confirm this happened.
And what would happen on, on our side, on the wetland protection side would be presuming this is within jurisdiction. Uh, obviously if it's reportable, then that, that goes to the state and that's, then whatever the reportable contaminant is, goes to the proper department to oversee proper removal. We have that going on at the moment at a different property. Um, on, under the wetland protection piece, anyone seeking to remove that soil as mandated would require approval from conservation to disturb that soil. We would also be reconfirming where it's going and, and proof and suitable soil coming back in, all those things. So it would end up being kind of a, a dual effort just because it would be in jurisdiction as well. A contaminated soil outside jurisdiction would be under the guise only of the state.
But, but I guess my question says in big highlighted, confirm this additional testing was performed and then confirm this happened. So do we know whether it happened or not, or that's a TBD?
Took six months to find this report. We're, that's the first one. I did not, we do not have in our possession today, this, the, the additional one. But to Ha- to Heidi's point, and again, sort of being a detective and connecting dots, I can't say this definitively and I wouldn't say this until we've done our full due diligence. But some assumptions that can be made is that either the dirt was removed back in 2001. Because if they didn't do the additional testing, they elected to do it that way. It would have been removed, it would have been cleared out. But the state would require either that or the additional testing to meet the requirements. And um, I believe talking with people who were here back then, that the additional test was performed. Um, it's just a matter of digging it out of the right filing. And unfortunately the filing system was different than it is today, but we do, we are working hard to try to track that additional one. And I have reached out, I have reached out to Clean Soils to see if they have a copy as well. And I've been playing phone tag with those guys.
And Wendy may have more insight on, on that as well, just because something that falls under her guys.
But my, my, again, I'm making an assumption, but based on how the regulatory process works as I understand it, one way or the other, because the initial test was performed, the study was done, it was resolved. Whether the dirt, dirt was removed, which I don't think was the case, or otherwise the state would have basically been honest to get, take care of that back then, if not, if we didn't take care of it uh, right away. So my, if the town did what they should have done and what they're supposed to do, which I believe they did, because we haven't been, this hasn't been hanging over our head for 21 years. No one's coming after us. I, I, I have to believe that it was done correctly, but we still just need to find that fi- that final piece of documentation, Mr. McDonald, to, to sort of cross that T dot, that I, and just make sure that something just didn't get forgotten about.
Cause the other thing they can do is just place limits on, put restrictions on use. So, okay, this is okay to have as a ball field or as a garage, but it's not okay to have as a restaurant. So we do need to make sure that there are no restrictions on use.
And I believe Wendy looked at that at the state level, but I'll confirm that.
Yeah, Wendy would have.
I, I spoke with, Wendy, Wendy and I have been working very closely on this project and trying to get all the different angles on it. Um, everything you said is fact. It's, there's a lot of pieces and there's a lot of information that we're trying to get that final stamp, that, that final piece to hold up. But all the, all the indications.
Beautiful as possible.
Right, right. Exactly. We believe it should, it, it was done and there isn't anything hanging out there on the state level that says that the town should have done this and did not do that. And that's where I, my belief is that the proper steps were taken. It's just finding that final document, the whole, put in the document, to put in the RFP to confirm it.
Thank you.
Um, a further comment, if I may, um, the fact that my kid said the water stunk 25 years ago had nothing to do with uh, where the stench came from or anything else. And since that time, there has been significant work, as you've just all heard, about the work that was done to try to make sure that whatever was contaminating Stool Brook, School Brook, if anything, didn't come from the highway garage.
If anything, exactly. And I'll tell you, by the way, I've walked down there with my kids much more recently and there is no stink. So.
No water in it right now, right?
Well, no, I mean, I walked there last, uh, probably last fall when there was plenty of water and there was, uh, no, it was lovely.
It would be a prank. So.
Are there any, uh, I know that there are more, uh, so I shouldn't even say, are there any? Cause I know there are more questions on the RFP. Haven't had a chance to read through the whole thing, so I'm looking.
That's fine. Kevin, there's some. But just one other point I, I'd like to make too, that's, there's sort of a list I put together of things that are still outstanding. We spoke about the environmental tests and the reporting. That was one of them I wanted to make sure I spoke about. Um, we are going to make sure, um, that the vehicles that are being stored and that some of the, even some of the little basic cosmetic things that we can do are done prior to getting, putting this out on the, um, are either removed or cleaned up or everything. It's been used as storage for 22 years. And so if we want to make sure that we make, we put our best foot forward with it, so we do have some work that we'll have to do there. Um, including removing some sand salt that's been stored in the back for, for a little while as well, which we'll have out by the end of the month. Um, the last thing I wanted to make sure I mentioned too, that's sort of out there, that it's a question that we're trying to get the least resolution is. Um, I've always said publicly, and I've said this privately, the most important thing with this project is to get the right tenant, the right business in there. We're going to see taxes in real estate in perpetuity off this once it's developed. Right now we aren't seeing a penny on it because it's, it's our property. We have, if anything, just holding a liability because it, the building does need some work. Um, there are areas where, um, you know, someone could get hurt if we own it. And, you know, we want to make sure it's, we do our best to security, make it safe, but there is always that hanging out there. One of the things that the state with 30B requires that we receive fair market value. And uh, Mr. Gibbs, our consultant, and I have discussed what the, we need to define what that looks like. Um, I'm less concerned with, with maximizing the purchase price, to be frank. I think it's most important to get the best project in there long-term for the community. Um, we'll, like I said, we'll see the residual real estate taxes in time and that's, that's going to be important. But um, the question that's outstanding that we have out to the state is this fair market value, consider the assessed value and appraised value, or is it based on the respondents and what they believe the value of that property is? Um, because the current assessed value, um, is over $700,000. Um, and maybe that's what the property is worth, fair market value when people respond. But um, the money that people are going to, the investment people will make uh, in the project, and we all know this. Um, if you maximize, if you, that purchase price is astronomical, the investment side of it, to make a business case for it would be less. And so we want to make sure that the improvements aesthetically are pleasing and that they meet the, the requirements of the town as well. So we're just trying to determine on, and get clarification on, on the fair market value component of it. But I do believe it's based on what the respondents will, will provide us with to give us a sense of what that will be.
That's how you came up with that sliding scale of what's acceptable or unacceptable or won't be considered. Fifty percent of market value or under 20% of market value, that, that's driving that?
And that'll be based on the final determination of what market value is. But yes, if somebody comes in with a higher bid versus a lower bid, that's the range for our market value.
Are there any other questions or concerns at this point?
Kevin, I'm going to shoot you a text with a couple of typos on here.
Okay, no problem.
All right. I, I have, I have read through that thing, but I'd like more time to digest it more. And we've got some more time, I assume.
Yes, yes, a hundred percent. Okay.
But you want this out September 7th or 9th or something, right? Isn't that when the RFP is meant to go?
My hope is, is we'll get the last documentation I mentioned earlier, we'll track that down on the environmental elements. We'll have that community conversation, we'll present it to the community as a draft form, get that final feedback and then hope at that point we'd release it uh, shortly thereafter, as long as there isn't thing, anything major that we need to make a change on. Um, and in my mind, sooner is better than later. Mostly because after the economic, or after our business development showcase, there was, this was one of the properties we highlighted to 75 people who showed up to the event. And half a dozen of the people who attended have expressed an interest on that. And I'm a strong believer, especially coming from the real estate world, you need to strike when the iron's hot. You need to make sure you, you, people don't move on to the next project. And so the hope is to move it soon as we can through the process, but doing it in a, in a measured and thoughtful way. We don't want to rush it, but we want to, we want to get it right, but we want to make sure we move it. So that's, the timeline would be to your point, Mr. Brown. Um, we're, we're targeting early September at this point and which is exciting.
What's your deadline for final feedback and conversation on this?
I would love to have, um, any feed, tonight's a big night to talk through it. But I'd love to be able to get feedback, maybe through the weekend, if there's anything that's striking the people. Uh, the general sense I'm receiving is just confirming what we already know, which is dot our i's, cross our t's, get all the final documentation together, pull it all. And a couple of. And a couple of typos that we'll need to make sure we flush out, but that was the biggest thing. I just wanted to make sure we're moving in the right direction. It wasn't anything major or anything that people wanted to, if they had questions, now's the opportunity to share. But please, after the fact, if there is a question, a particular one, feel free to ask.
Got it, thanks.
Thank you. All right, the last item on our agenda is probably going to take a little bit, but I'm in fact looking forward to it. Before we get into the nitty gritty, obviously every year the board engages in discussing goals and priorities for the board and for the town for the, you know, for the upcoming year. We do this annually and we're a little late to the process, which I take responsibility for. I think typically we would have done it about a month ago. But the first step in looking forward is to basically look backward. So sitting here on board docs was, or is what were our stated town goals approved in August of last year for fiscal '22. So as we get ready to look forward to what we're going to claim as our goals for the coming year, we're going to start by looking back and basically giving ourselves a report card of how we did over the last year. And then we'll decide at the end whether or not we're going to fire Kevin and we'll just.
I think we did great.
Yeah, well, there we go, we're all done, guys. Kevin, I will ask you to guide us through this. I know, I will say in full disclosure, Kevin and I had, what was it, like a three-hour meeting on Monday in which we discussed any things at length, including this. So I've been over this and I'll give you a spoiler alert, I feel pretty good about our last year. So, but I'll give Kevin the reins on taking us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So 2000 fiscal '21, we created five core goals. Last year, we also had five core goals. The difference between fiscal '22 and '21 is '22, we had many more subcategories than in '21. And so the way we set it up is we created a general goal. That was the town's goal, that's the select board's goal. And below that were specific items that we were targeting. And I know it was never necessarily that the goal was to reach every single one of them or all of them, or even most of them, but it was sort of to give us specific places to focus our attention. And so looking at it with Mr. Hook Monday, it did kind of become a scorecard in a sense because you're like, did we do that? Did we not do that? But again, the initial intent was that this was, because my initial concern back then was there's a lot of subcategories. And if this is sort of what we're going to be grading ourselves on, you know, we're going to do our best to do as many as we can, but there's a lot here. But we did a really great job nonetheless. So the first one was economic development, consistent with fiscal '21, that was the number one item on the town's goals. There's three subcategories. The first, fund and develop a master plan. We've done that. We're developing it, so the first part of it, funding, it's completed. Development will take place. We have the consultant on, as we all know. We, big checkbox in my mind that we've done what we said we were going to do over the last fiscal. Continue revitalization of downtown, old highway garage, enhance frontage of Main Street. I think that's more of a beautification component. Fun, find funding and implement wayfinding signage, enhance business opportunities and pursue opportunities for improvement of the village shopping center. Old highway garage, I think we all just went over that, so check. Enhance frontage of Main Street and the beautification. We continue to work with the Topsfield Gardening Club. The planners have been a big success, the solar lights with the planners, often those hang have been really nice. And we're looking at other ways to improve the streetscapes as well. Find funding and implement a wayfinding signage, we did receive a grant from the state and we have pursued an RFP on that. And we're working with a consultant, our consultant, who drafted the scope of work to confirm that the elements that he created, that the three responding companies did in fact meet the minimum standards of his expectations before moving that project any further. But we have till the end of June this coming year, '23, to spend those funds. Next is enhance business opportunities. To be frank, it was a little bit of a soft goal, it was more of an idea. And so we had the business showcase, we've explored all different things through surveys of what the community wants. I think the generalities of enhanced business opportunities has certainly, we've been working towards that as well in a general sense. And to pursue opportunities for improvement of the village shopping center. As the board knows and many others who have spoken with, I have begun a regular meeting with the property owner and we are exploring some really exciting opportunities. We've talked about this through our presentations, of even possibly creating a public space in the front of his property that we can beautify and make available to public to enjoy, a pocket park, which is, we're trying to, in the next month to six weeks, we should know if we are able to get there. But we have verbally agreed to certain terms to allow us to pursue that. And then the C, the third item under economic development was conduct analysis of Route 1 commercial opportunities. There's three subcategories, create a list of current vacancies. We have not done that. And it was something that we looked at at a certain point with the, with the the third member of our team here in the town administrator's office who retired. She began the process, but with the retirement and then short staffed, we did not pursue it any further with the other priorities that we're working on. And really, considering the value of our time being put towards that versus put towards other efforts like the garage RFP, it was just really allocating our time appropriately to get our biggest bang for our buck. That will be part of the master plan process anyway. There'll be some analysis on vacancies on Route 1, so we know that will happen. And we have the funding and the resources to help us with that over the course of the next year. And then meet with business owners, determine how the town can improve occupancy rates. I've met with Ray Lahn, I've met with the group, the Woodley Group, I've met with Flump, Peter Flump and his properties. I've met with individual property owners, I've met with somebody who's looking to potentially do a ground-up development on Route 1, an exciting opportunity, who self-identified and since we've had some great conversations. So there's been a lot of outreach to the business community. And then discuss with Essex Agricultural Society Development Opportunities of the vacant gas station. We've had a number of conversations about that. It was actually slated to be one of our opportunity properties during the business showcase, it was going to be one of the four, including the garage. And the night before, we were going to present that the property owner, the general manager indicated that he would like to pause on publicly announcing that it's for sale until they get a little more work within their organization. So we have paused that, but we made, I would say, although it hasn't been dispositioned or improved, we've done the legwork to sort of create the considerations around possibly doing something in that property and really pitching how important it is to the town that something hopefully comes of that property. So basically of all that, the only one we didn't complete was to create a list of current vacancies. So that's one.
And I would, before we move on to the next item, I would just pause and ask if anyone has any. Rather than just you talking for the next 40 minutes, we can take this by heading if anyone has any questions or anything.
My recollection is a year ago that this was arguably the most important category that we all focused in on, felt strongly about. And, you know, I think by and large, you know, this has been accomplished or is in progress and I feel pretty good about that.
Well, I would, I would agree. I, I believe that Kevin is continuing to make some progress with Flump. I'm not sure how far that can go, because we know what Flump is about. But, but it's, it's still, it's still percolating and that is the single biggest issue other than the way Route 1 looks. One of the things that I'm, we didn't talk about the gas station across the street from Lawton Welding, which is where Stocker Oil is. Have we any, have we any conversations with them, Kevin?
Not at this time. I know that Signature Motors and Stocker Oil are two incredibly valuable parcels in my mind for economic development on Route 1, both. I think both could be very much improved and I think that together, there could be something of some significance that could happen there. I think with the master plan and zoning considerations on that section of Route 1 in particular, it could open up in the next 18 months through the master plan process, financial benefits for those properties possibly turn over and be redeveloped into better uses.
Do we know anybody at Stocker Oil? Do they really care about the town of Topsail?
I have, I've not interacted with anyone from Stocker Oil at this time. I know it's somebody who I, who have not self-identified as, as really being present or interested in some of the conversations, like the neighbor Ray Lahn, I've met with him earlier this week, I've met with him a handful of times. He has a passion for the community, he's moving to the community and he's proactively came to my office saying, how can I help? What, what does the town need? And we've, we've really started good conversations on that. I think Stockers, and same with Signature Motors, are very focused on their core businesses and less about trying to enhance and beautify their properties per se. That's an assumption, again, I haven't met with them, but just based on the types of businesses, it wouldn't be unusual if that's typically what the mindset could be. But, no, they had not, there's not been any issues with them other than that those, those properties are significantly important to us and not, haven't had the chance to engage with them quite yet.
Good, thank you. All right.
Marshall, Marshall, see Jen on the phone?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, it's Jen Collins Brown, sorry. I'm, I'm trying AirPods for the first time. I just want to say Dick Stocker loves Topsail and has been very generous to residents. Neither Dick Stocker nor Signature Motors own that property. It's owned by a family that has a home on Summer Street, so it's a giant piece of property. That family is not interested in selling that right now, but I'm sure that family would be interested in conversations with, you know, just about zoning and things like that. But Mr. Stocker is extremely involved in trying to help people in the town. And like I said, they're not his, neither he nor Signature Motors owns those buildings. So which is frustrating, but, but I'm sure they'd be, that family would be open to a dialogue. Their dad passed away a few years ago and they kind of, they're trying to keep it the way he had it, so.
Could we, is it possible that we could find an alternative site for Stocker Oil that wasn't on a prime piece of property on Route 1?
Yeah, he probably, well, I was, I was going to say something fresh. I mean, I don't know, he does a really lot of good work for people in this town. He's very generous with his skills and his time. So I think maybe more the conversation might be to try to open with the owners of the property. Because I know that Dick has tried to do things with that property, but he does not own it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think the, the zoning I mentioned, I think that's a prime example of what a master plan could potentially open up opportunities and make it more, more options for uses on that space and encouraged for something to happen through zoning.
I know the Signa, I know the owner of Signature Motors fairly well and he is not going to be easy to deal with.
Well, if I may redirect us to looking backwards before we look too far forward. Let's go ahead and take a look at number two.
Communication transparency was something we talked heavily about and the importance of starting to enhance those elements. And we had started to delay some of the groundwork over the course of the last two years. And with some of the members that we have here on our select board really having a true passion and seeing the value and importance of it. The first one was the subcategories under communication transparency. The first was identify and develop better communication channels and policies, i.e. a town Facebook group, increase cable utilization, easier to navigate website. So as we know, we've, in the first quarter of the calendar year, we released a social media presence, Facebook, but also Instagram and Twitter. And we've invested in having somebody help and support us with our digital communication coordinator, who's doing absolutely a fantastic job. I would say of all the like-sized communities in the region, I would say you could put Topsail right at the top of the list for the amount of communication that goes out through social media networks to the residents and stakeholders. We're doing multiple posts a day throughout the week on events, wins, grants, things of that nature, just general information that might be useful for people. So that really there's a place people can go that's official by the town on Facebook or social media to get their information. And we've got tremendous amount of positive feedback on, on the efforts that, that we've undertaken and the direction that the select board pointed us in all those months ago. So much appreciated the support on that.
I think, I think your team is doing a good job with the content. I mean, it, it really comes across as authoritative, yet approachable. You know, it's, it's exactly that, you, you really nailed the tone, I think, that you, you were striving for, so I think that's great.
Thank you. And feedback on that, constant feedback's really important and content. If there's certain things that the board or others would like us to consider putting on from our team and both, and the community, let us know. We want to make sure we're meeting the needs of the community and what they want to hear. The second item was improve the town website and ensure content branding, utilize this marketing tool for the town, assign content, update responsibilities and job descriptions, add new link to TCP on the visitor top, visit Topsail, add new section, how to do business in Topsail. We've done all of those and the overarching part of that is that we, we went through a very lengthy process of creating a new branded website that meets our signage actually, and that we went, the process we went through, that was really, the signage design became a branding exercise. It was multiple months and then that translated into a modification of our design work with the website to make sure that everything had a consistent theme, that, that cranberry, black and cream really being our colors and incorporating the silhouette of the rooster and also incorporating, you know, some more traditional historic-looking elements. And you know, on the website, we have that welcome to Topsail that's embedded over the imagery, which was really, I think is a really nice touch to the website. I, one of the things I'm most proud of with the website personally is when I asked Miriam, our civic plus liaison through the processes, and Miriam, you've done websites, probably hundreds, if not thousands of these for towns and cities. Have you ever seen anything like the one we designed? She said, no. And I said, perfect. So we don't want to be a municipal website, we want to be something that, that you know is official, you know you're getting the real information, it's not a sub website, but that is not off the shelf, here's your website design, like any ever, any other town USA. And so I think we really did a good job. The team did, Debbie, Marshall, many others who participated in the design work to get that right and to be very thoughtful of how we located certain information on the site.
Do we have any statistics on site usage?
We can get that. I don't have it at the fingertips. We have, we have analytics that we could pull and tell us where people travel most. Typically, jobs, paying bills, trash, recycling are your top three.
Okay, any, I mean, I think we've covered communication pretty, pretty expertly. I'm ready to move on to town services and operations.
So there's five subcategories, human resources. One of it's conduct salary survey and implement appropriate recommendations. We are in contract with Gov USA, Gov HR USA, who's performing our salary survey, so that is underway. Implement appropriate HR audit recommendations. We have a committee, as I spoke to my TA updates, who are performing an audit of the audit and of the general bylaws and making recommendations, hopefully in mid-September to myself and then ultimately to the board on any types of modifications within the policy. And then the second category after HR is IT improvements. Finalize installation of the fiber network. Optimize use of the IT regionalization. Evaluate, prioritize opportunities for increased effective use of munis. use of Munis. Um, I, the first one, um, the fiber network, I think. And this is also for number two, to optimize the IT regionalization. Just because of our collaboration and participation in the IT regionalization, we received a, a grant that's going to allow us a $300,000 grant for the, the entire collaborative. Over a hundred thousand of those dollars will go towards Top Seal completing phase three, which is connecting Danvers to our police station by the police station connects to our network. Um, so an example of our IT, our participating with the IT regionalization, besides this operating costs on an ongoing basis is now we're winning grants as being, as a result of being a part of it. And the fiber network with this will be, two of our three phases will be completed. The final phase will be building up the final loop and adding the final nodes to the final project, which we've talked about possibly using ARPA money to complete. And the Munis out rollout, um, we have a schedule that Jackie Comar, treasurer, who's, who's leading the project is put together where we'll begin implementing training in September to, for all employees and subsequently over a three month period, implementing changes at the, at the department level to in, to post receipts and to input invoices, which is something that the accounting office is, is doing a, a significant amount of work on. And this will be again, at the department level, creating efficiencies operationally, um, from, from that perspective. Um, the third subcategory, town services and operations is strengthen the culture of safety in the workplace and ensure adherence to OSHA guidelines. Um, we received a Maya grant, um, between, last year, uh, for $8,000 between the fire chief, police chief and our DPW director, where, uh, a number of, um, items were purchased that are safety related. Fire department received a harness, um, for their ladder truck. Chief, weigh in if I missed that one, but that was my understanding is there was a harness, a safety harness. And, um, the DPW received a grant for, um, safety equipment, helmets, vests, chaps, and to better protect them when they're removing trees and, and debris. Um, so we've, we've invested through grant opportunities in, in safety for our team in those ways, among other things as well. And then identify, implement applications and procedures to improve efficiency and customer service. I put a question mark next to that one, to be honest, because it's a little bit of a soft goal. Um, it's not really a tangible, yes, we achieved this. Uh, it's more of how are we doing from a customer service standpoint? And, you know, one of the most important things we can do is be available and present when someone needs us in our community. And we take pride, myself and all my department heads, in getting out onsite with the residents or business owners or other stakeholders when there's a need. Um, I was out on Lockwood Lane looking at some drainage issues, uh, today with, um, a resident. I met with two residents as part of the Washington Street project earlier today as well, out on Washington Colrain and then Washington Boxford. Just to update them on the projects that we're working on that might impact them. Um, and responding to constituent, um, concerns as well. So today alone, we've had multiple interactions, but that's something we strive to do as often as we possibly can. And I'd say that that's reflective and, and really a priority of all the departments. Um, Heidi's on this call, Catherine Gabriel's on this call, um, Chief Hubby's on this call, Chief Collins Brown's on this call. So proud of the work that they do of being present and available to our community, something that's really important to us. It's probably, if anything, the most important thing we do is being responsive to our community. And, um, not only is it important, but we enjoy it. So, um, I'd like to think we achieved that, that goal, um, in that sense. And then lastly, under the category is ensure development of written policies and procedures for newly reorganized water, park and cemetery and highway, some, uh, departments. I just referenced a couple of examples, recreation department when that was created, created a number of policies of field use policies. Um, field, um, rental fee policies. Cemetery's created, we recently, the board proved it, we created a policy relative to who's eligible for family plots after a certain level of descendants, when does the chain break and who's appropriate. It was a little bit of, um, it was almost an unwritten policy of how they treated it historically. We put that to writing. So those are a couple of recent examples of policies we've created around, um, the reorganizing of those three departments.
I will say that there are a couple, uh, when Kevin and I reviewed this, uh, the other day, there were a couple, uh, points where, in fact, uh, point, uh, A of the next item is the most kind of general, well, that's what our job is to do, like that, that is just what we do on a day to day basis. So, um, to your point, identifying, implement, applications and procedures, efficiency and customer service does kind of fit in that, well, yeah, that's, that's what we do. And to that end, all those people that you mentioned and others, I have found we are the, uh, you know, thoroughly communicative and res-, uh, people respond virtually immediately when, uh, I reach out with questions. Uh, I have joked with Gary Wilds multiple times that he wishes I didn't have his cell phone number. Cause that guy always either responds when I call or, you know, when I text him. Uh, Chief Collins Brown responded to me while I was bleeding, uh, when I was asking if, uh, some of her EMTs might be able to help out. So the responsiveness of the leadership in this town, uh, is tremendous. Um, so credit all around for that. Uh, are there any, uh, questions on town services and operations or clarifications? Nothing? All right. Let's move on to item number four, uh, point A, uh, which, uh, I just referenced as the most general. Of course, that's a thing that we do.
That's what we do.
Physical management, um, yes, develop an effective long-term method of understanding, prioritize the capital, facilities, needs of the town and the schools to manage the tax burden of residents. Yes. It's absolutely a priority of ours. We've proven that it is. We'll continue to work very hard to ensure that every dollar we spend is put to good use and then we maximize efficiencies as well. Um, and I think the proof's in the pudding and I'd like to think that we've, the team's done a really great job around that. Um, evaluate broadening the five-year financial mon-, uh, model to facilitate evaluation of various revenue and expense scenarios. That is one of the only other ones that I would say that we are in process with and we have not completed. And that is something which we refer to as our financial, five-year financial forecast. Um, I have to give credit where credit is absolutely due with Catherine Gabriel, and I discussed that earlier in the year. Um, Catherine made some, did some really great work pulling some good information and projecting some revenue side of it. The second part of that was on my shoulders, is on my shoulders, and that's to do the write-up component, which did not get fulfilled by this time of this meeting. Um, but it is something we started working on, but I highlighted that one as one I'd like to bring over the finish line in the near future, because we haven't completed that one at this time. And then C, create a town meeting warrant that addresses the town school needs while minimizing the overall tax burden to residents. It's similar to A. Yes, we try to do that, absolutely try to do that. Overall, our overall goal is to avoid overrides while delivering the same, if not better services. And that's by reorganizing departments, that's finding grants, that's creating efficiencies. Um, again, things that we strive and pride ourselves in doing.
Kevin, on, on that one, do we have a liaison within the school committee? Cause I know that what I'm learning is it's kind of a separate process. I, I, I probably just don't understand it all entirely, but it's not entirely in our hands, right?
The school budget?
Yeah.
In essence, we, we, school committee controls the budget. It, there's guidelines for, that's, uh, produced by the FinCom to meet a certain target with regards to how much their overall budget grows. Last year it was 3%, year prior to that was 2.75% for the elementary schools. Same goals go then to the, um, or separate goals, but similar goals of an overall target for general operation, uh, costs and, and, and capital costs increases year over year for Mascanomic. Difference with Mascanomic is because it's a regional, the proration really impacts and swings of each town. Whereas if our guideline is 2.75% increase, which is what the FinCom set forward last year to Masco, and they, uh, operationally and capital are within that 2.75% increase annually, but our enrollment shifts go up and the other two communities go down, which is exactly what happened last year and the year prior to that. We then get held with eight and a half percent increases and five and three quarter percent increases like we saw the last two years respectively. Even though we're asking for two and a, two and three quarters.
So I guess, I, I guess my thing is other than through the, or is it through the FinCom? Maybe that's the answer. For C is giving ourselves a goal that at least one of our hands is tied behind our back on, or I should say you guys gave yourselves a goal that you did not have complete control over. Is that, is that fair to say?
I, I think because it's, again, it's, it's almost like the first one where it's in my mind, Mr. McDonald, it's not sort of a meet this, you have to hit this mark specifically. You have to keep the number at two and a half percent or whatever it might be, even though that, that would be uncontrollable anyway, because of enrollments, as I gave the example. You know, again, create a town meeting warrant that addresses town and school needs while minimizing the overall tax burden for residents. My take on that is we just have a very clean, appropriate warrant that is, doesn't, there's nothing that spikes or, you know, $300,000 the goal for capital, our free cash to be spent towards capital. We need $300,000 in free cash to be spent towards capital and those are things we did. So, um, that's my take on that one, but it is a little bit of a lot. Um, a broad goal of a theoretical goal versus necessarily something we can directly control and put a number to it.
And I'd also point out that while we, the select board have absolutely zero role in the creation of the school budget, uh, and Kevin, I don't think you have a lot of authority. Kevin is definitely involved, uh, and speaks with Dr. Morrison. Um, and so he is more involved in the school budget. Again, doesn't have control of it, but is more involved than we are, which is to say we're not involved at all. Uh, and there also can be items, uh, on the warrant, uh, that are capital expenditures for the school. So there is monies beyond just the school, uh, operating budget that could end up, uh, on the, the town meeting warrant.
Thank you.
Uh, back to Raphael's comment, if I may, um, would it make any sense for this board to designate liaisons to Masco School Committee meetings and, uh, Top Seal Elementary School Committee meetings, just so that we go and listen to what's going on? Uh, would that help you, Kevin? And should we consider something like that?
I know that the finance committee has a, some, uh, someone allocated directly towards going to those meetings and reporting back, um, on the operations. And I would say that they do a fantastic job. The reports I hear are robust and, and really comprehensive. So, you know, I certainly see as much communication and, and again, being present as in, in many places as possible to understand all the different elements of what's playing, um, is a good thing. I think that I would definitely say the FinCom has a great handle on it and I, I don't see there being any issue with the select board also participating if, if, if there's an interest to do so as well. Um, that would be my answer to that question, Mr. Jackson.
Marshall, I'll leave it up to you to decide whether we ought to move in that direction, but, uh, that might be something worth considering.
Okay. I will say that, uh, you know, we've had, I've specifically had kind of informal conversations with uh, Chair Nelson on the school committee and Dr. Holmes as well as, uh, Mr. Greenberg. So there is, again, i- it's, it's delicate in that, you know, we don't, I don't like the word legally, statutorily have any role in, you know, they are an independent. I mean, not that I'm telling you anything you don't know, but they're an independent board who gets to do their own thing. They're elected just as we are. But we are still a small town and we all do get along and we all are interested in working cooperatively. So there is, there are avenues of communication that, that are open, um, and we are talking a little bit, so.
I know, I know you do.
Uh, that leaves us with, uh, just, uh, the last item.
Resident safety and amenities. And there's five, uh, four categories, first being enhanced recreational community event opportunities. Subcategory, hire recreation director. She's been a fantastic hire, great asset to the team in the town, Stephanie Sweeney, big accolades. Um, a lot of the things that everybody sees happening out there in the common and, and other places um, is a direct result of the great work she's doing. Uh, second, pursue grant opportunities. I, Mr. Chairman and I were speaking about this. If this is specific, specific to that position or in general terms around, you know, recreation and, and improvements to our ball fields and other places. Um, I would say we're always pursuing grants and that we have done a heck, the, the departments really, really lies with each of the department heads and their staff. Have done a phenomenal job of identifying and pursuing, and most importantly, being successful in achieving a number of grants competitively. Um, I know Friday, I let the board know that we received almost a half a million dollars in grants from two different sources, green communities and, uh, the fiber one for, um, for the regionalization effort, although we're only seeing a piece of that 300, it's still, um, it's, it's the lion's share of the group that we're getting. Um, it's something we're very, we take great pride in, in those activities. Again, people on this call right here, Chief Collins Brown, Chief Hubby, um, have done a fantastic job. And I, I point to them from a public safety standpoint. Um, there's a lot of opportunity there and they've, they've grabbed it and they take great pride in it. So big thank you to the departments for their efforts on grants.
Kevin, I, in, I am blown away at just how good everybody is at finding money on that team. I, God, it's, it's, it's incredible. It's so good for all of us in this.
It is good.
Do, it's, it's remarkable.
And the really nice thing too is a lot of times those grants, they can be used towards items that we would use our operating budget for. And so what ends up happening is we return at the end of the year, some of those monies back into the free cash, which can then allow us to buy capital items. More, more importantly, it can allow us to put money into stabilization funds for our rainy day and it helps us with our bond rating. So there's so many good things in other places. Those grants allow us to expand some of the basic services that we can provide in a very positive light. So just thank you, Mr. Brown for the.
Oh, listen.
For.
Well learned.
Um, enhance recreational, recreational opportunities, summer camps, farm stands, farmer's market. Um, we have the homegrown market tomorrow. I hope everyone can come. Um, but we've, we've really, um, Stephanie is really focused on, this really seems like Stephanie's category, right?
And I point out just specifically, the ice skating rink was a huge success. Necessarily counts as a summer camp or an art show or a community garden. It doesn't fit there, but in terms of a recreational opportunity, uh, rare was the time that I went back, uh, went by there and didn't see at least somebody out on that ice. So that was.
And it was actually frozen.
Yeah, when it was actually frozen. So I would say that that was a tremendous success.
So we need to have controlled weather on the goals for next year, is that what we're saying?
We could build a dome, uh, that'd be great.
We'll bring that to the next ARPA meeting.
Half pump park.
Yes.
There you go.
Um, and then the last one is, uh, encourage increased volunteer involvement. One of the first things that Stephanie did was she did a survey around recreation and part of her survey was to ask who, if you responded, are you interested in putting, put on a volunteer list? We have over 183 volunteers who raised their hand in this community through that survey alone to help us through recreation. We also leveraged Mascanomic, um, for a number of events last year. Um, last August, so a year ago, we did the, um, music festival down, um, on a Saturday. And it was an army of red Masco shirts because all the, the students were looking for volunteer hours and they came out in robes. And, um, so we're, we're leveraging volunteers as much as we can, um, which obviously offsets cost and bringing people in. Um, but it also allows the community to be involved. And I think there's the, the greatest values when people within the community gets to participate in a community event. Um, and so we're excited to leverage effort Tomato Festival coming up in September. Holiday on the Greens, another great example. Just a lot of really great, uh, community, um, opportunities and events, uh, that are run by and with members of our community. The next one under resident safety and amenities was B, monitor and address PFAS. Um, we're monitoring it. And the address issue, I would say the closest thing we did, we haven't removed it. The cost to do so is, is multiple millions of dollars. Because we are not and have not been in exceedance of the 20 parts per trillion. We're now testing at about eight, nine typically on a, on a monthly basis. Because we haven't exceeded that. typically on a, on a monthly basis. Because we haven't exceeded that, the grant opportunities to even design or build have not been available to us. So it would be local monies to pursue resolving that issue directly. I would say though, that we did receive a grant, competitive grant through DEP for, it was, we all remember it was about a quarter, a little less than a quarter million dollars, about 200,000 to do a pilot program to find out if and when the time comes to want to treat PFAS at our facility. What's the carbon makeup to remove the six elements? One thing about PFAS I'll mention as well is that they're now federal government, which used to be 70 parts per trillion, compared to Massachusetts, which is 20 parts per tr- trillion. As the threshold is, and there were six chemicals that we're testing for PFAS six. Federal government's now moving towards a more restrictive, less than what the, the, potentially less than what the state's requiring in 20 parts per trillion. In addition to that, I believe there's three or five additional chemicals within PFAS that they're now looking for us to test in the future as well. So the one thing I can say about PFAS, although incredibly important in that we are absolutely on top of it as much as anyone else is, it does seem to continually be a moving target. And that's somewhat frustrating because investments we make today with the technology improving and the, the restrictions or the requirements that the state or federal government puts on us becomes even more restrictive after we build something. So it's sort of a wait-and-see game in when and how do we invest if we do to remove the PFAS in the future. But there's, there's, right now, today, we're at as good a place as we can be. I continually talk with DEP and Eric Lowell, who's the Eastern Region Water Person. His focus has, has pivoted from a year and a half ago when we had that information session on PFAS to other communities that are much, much, much worse, where they're 300 parts per trillion, 1,000 parts per trillion communities and they're trying to fix their issues. So, but we do talk and we seem to be in a good place with DEP and, and and what we're doing, providing water in the community. C is identify and prioritize a need for connecting sidewalks. I think that one is incredibly important and it's actually something that we'll be bringing up at our next ARPA meeting. We were talking about doing this even before Mr. Hook and I took a look at the goals and, and brought them back up. A lot of what we've, these goals are there and it's, we check them from time to time with, it's not necessarily a front burner. We just kind of know what the goals are and we roll. This is one that we know is, has a real, it could be a real opportunity for the town. Similar to the Colbert and Bridge assessment that we're doing for $73,000 using ARPA money. We could do something similar with sidewalks, and I think there's a huge value to doing that. Explicitly speaking about Bear Hill Park and the Pump Park. If that comes to fruition, I feel strongly from a public safety standpoint, we need to take a hard look at the sidewalks leading from the common to Bear Hill Park and seeing what we can do from sidewalk improvements, as that's technically considered a shared sidewalk, bike and pedestrian. DOT standards for shared sidewalks have increased in width significantly. They're now, I believe, seven feet wide, whereas that sidewalk in certain places is three feet wide. So there might be some real investment that we need to make in the future. And if we have an assessment, that would open us up for potential grant opportunities or earmarks in the future to fund projects like that. And the last one, D, revitalize Topsfield Green Communities and evaluate high-value projects. And I think we all know, we have got a great group of people six months ago that we put together for the Sustainability Advisory Committee. So we've rebranded, in a sense, the Green Committee to the Sustainability Advisory Committee, the SAC. But we met Tuesday, had a great conversation on a number of important topics, and they're doing some really great work. So the revitalization of that group is, is pretty strong, I'd say at this point. That concludes our five goals that we set in 2022 and a rundown of how we have stacked up to those goals. I'm gonna take a glass.
Thank you. Uh, so here's, uh, well, first of all, I'll, I'll pause and say, you know, if you've got anything you want to add to the review of last year. Anything you think that isn't covered in there or any questions you have about what we've done in the past year? Uh, now, and then I'll turn this to looking forward.
All right. I, I have none at the moment, but I'd like to have some time to go through that list again and cross out what I think has been done and add whatever else I think needs to be addressed in the future.
All right. Uh, so here's what, uh, here's what the schedule looks, uh, looks like, or at least the next step in the schedule. And I'll do my best to lay out dates after tonight. Our next regular meeting is scheduled right now for Monday, August 29th. And what I'm going to suggest that's, you know, a week and a half from now is A, we hold that meeting in person. And B, the members come to that meeting with not a final version, but you know, be ready to, to speak to what you would like us to prioritize as goals for the coming year. And we'll begin the process of developing this document that we just reviewed for last year into the new document that we're going to be reviewing one year from now roughly. And so we'll have that discussion. The reason I would suggest we do it in person, and it's what we did last year, is it's just a discussion that lends itself better to us being in one room. Rather than, you know, talking over each other on Zoom and, you know, we, we can utilize whiteboards and all of that, uh, that rigmarole. So assuming nobody has an issue with coming up with a rough draft written and or verbal of at least the, the outline of what you would like to see us work on in the coming year. And obviously you can use what was our fiscal 22 goals as a, as a blueprint for what our final document for this year will bear a resemblance to.
Marshall, I think you just said Monday, the 29th. Is that right? That's a board meeting, not a work session, is that right?
Yeah, no, that's correct. That's correct. We're able to do it in a board meeting.
Okay.
Uh, I have looked at that, Kevin, Deb and I looked at that agenda. It's not, it's not heavy. And I want to, you know, yet there is, there certainly is an argument to be made that, you know, this would work better in a work session, but because we've been, you know, rather than just me saying I missed the boat on getting started on this earlier, I'll say we've been very busy this summer. Uh, and so we're a little late getting to this, but for us to wait to another work session, basically, let's, you know, almost another month passed and I don't think we want to do that. And with this general meeting on the 29th agenda being relatively light, I think we can, we can do this in, in the framework of that.
Okay.
And there's no issues being in person with the Zoom law that passed and all?
We checked with the governor's order. The only question was, because there was discussion at one point that the newly revised governor's order would in fact require the ability to, to basically zoom in with whatever fancy language they use. I'm assured that that does not exist. I mean, obviously meetings were held in person forever before COVID, so it'll still be available as it was, shall I say, in the olden days. But no, we, I'm assured that we're allowed to do this. And again, we did it last year a couple of times. So there is precedent for that. And I will also just mention that also on our schedule from last year that we're late getting to is our annual review of Mr. Kevin Hartunian. So we'll lay out a, a methodology for that on the 29th and we'll kind of do these things interwoven together, which I think works fine because they are interwoven together. Because let's be honest, in many ways, we review Kevin on our goals. We review ourselves and we review him. So, but on the 29th, we'll have a, a kind of schedule and, and plan for that as well. So unless there's any objection to both having, being prepared in that amount of time and meeting in person, then I think we can just plan on that being, being the plan.
Cool.
We, we haven't met in person for a long time and that'll be really interesting about whether or not we know how to do that again.
Well, we did it last year twice, once for board goals and once for Kevin's review. And we had an executive, uh, no, no, we didn't, nevermind, I take that back.
Yeah, we did.
We did, we did. We had one executive session after a meeting in person, which was fun because we got to kick Kevin out of the room. Nice. Um, so there you go. That, that should summarize our plan for the 29th. Again, a couple of other items on the agenda, but we're going to spend most of it on this. And by the way, I did talk to Lynn earlier today, and she's on board with both this schedule and with the meeting in person. All right. Do we have anything else before?
Just, just to comment, more and more comments that I read in the paper about the pressure to provide multimedia meetings. And it talked about small towns have a problem with this because it winds up being a fairly significant investment to do that. It sounds like the pressure is building to, to do that. So we've got to make sure that we're moving in that direction.
And that was the concern around what I was mentioning with the governor's order that would have required it. And I think that we, or at least I, I'll fully admit, I kind of have a tunnel vision that when I think about public meetings, I think only about our own. But obviously it applies to, you know, every time the ZBA meets, every time the planning board meets, every time any one of these meets, that's a public meeting and it applies to all of them. Uh, and so the cost to create a hybrid environment for all of our public meetings, I don't know what the number is, but I can only imagine it's exorbitant. And my fear is that, or was, and I guess remains is, that the state would mandate it and it would be another unfunded mandate in which we would have to do it. And what it would basically force us, I think at least now would be, we wouldn't be able to meet in person because we wouldn't be able to guarantee the access that that would involve. We would only be able to do that as long as we continue to meet in Zoom. But as of right now, that requirement doesn't exist, so we are safe. But yes, I think we're all fully aware that should that requirement come on down the line, then we're either going to be forced to come up with a boatload of cash or continue to meet in Zoom. Uh, and before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I just want to say one more thing. I know that there was a lot of chatter across town in the last week, concerns around what I call Topsfield Night at the Fair. But through Kevin and Jamie working together, we were happy to announce today that all of that is settled. There is no change to the previous way of doing business. So Topsfield residents are still going to be able to gain their free access on opening Friday night and free parking. Uh, so I want to thank Kevin and I want to thank Jamie and the fair for continuing to work with us and making that available. I think we've got a great relationship going with the Essex Agriculture Society and this was just proof of that. So folks can head down and get those tickets. I don't have the exact date. It's not quite yet. Maybe it starts next week, but it'll be great. And, and you know, feel free to say thanks to the lady in the ticket window because I know that she gets a lot of people coming up there. And maybe they're not always as polite as they could be. So, big smiles all around, folks, big smiles.
Kudos, two, kudos to Kevin and his negotiating skills.
Appreciate the support. It was, it was, it was, I think we were all very much united in working through any, any changes and grateful it worked out the way it did. Appreciate all the efforts by Jamie O'Brien.
All righty. With that, if there's something else?
There is. I, I want to make sure I got my homework right.
Okay.
Comments on the garage RFP over the weekend or by the weekend? No, it'll be over the weekend. Yeah. Goals, get them jotted down, thoughts for our August 29th meeting. That, that's my homework, right?
Yep. That's what you got.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All right. Is there any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Hearing none, I will move to roll call vote. Mr. Brown? Mr. McDonald?
As I heard in the SAC meeting the other day, yay.
Yay, I said it wrong. I said yay or nay, and all of a sudden everyone was voting yay. And I'm like, well, I'm gonna let it go for this one, but, but it was nice. Everyone was cheering. They were very excited to vote in favor of things. Mr. Jackson?
I will, I.
And I do too. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Bye, everybody.